Thank you. The recorder has already started. Thank you very much. You beat me to it. It's usually the ritual is I ask the recorder to start, but. No, it's fine. So with that, I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Town of Ledyard Planning and Zoning Commission. It is Thursday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P M. This is a remote Zoom meeting and it is being recorded. With that, I'll do a roll call. Ms. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Here.
Mr. Capeon.
Here.
Mr. White Scarver.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Wood is excused and the chairman Woody is present. I'm not sure we actually have anything to vote on, but I will seat Mr. White Scarver for the excused Mr. Wood this evening. Changes to the agenda.
I don't want to share my screen yet because I'm still letting people in.
Yeah, no, it's fine. So I had mentioned trying to move Mr. Heller, but I think we have no action on several of the first two items. So I think we're just going to go through and we'll get to you in a couple of seconds, Mr. Heller.
Thank you.
No problem. I apologize. I skipped over Susan's petitions. If anyone, a member of the public wishes to speak on any non-agenda items, please unmute your line. Let us know your name and address and you have the floor.
Thank you. Eric Traister. The reason I'm here, the reason I'm here this evening is to urge the commission to exercise its opt-out rights under the updated enabling statute. The new enabling statute provides for three opt-outs. One of them is for temporary healthcare structures, which the town has already opted out of a couple of years ago. And the reason I believe the town opted out of the temporary healthcare facilities is because it allowed accessory apartments in backyards for, as a temporary health structure. The second opt-out provision in the enabling statute is the enabling statute requires one parking space for each studio or one-bedroom dwelling unit and not more than two, no more than one parking space for a studio or one-bedroom dwelling unit, and no more than two parking spaces for each dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms unless the municipality opts out of the ordinance. That's very similar to our current regs, but our current regs are deficient. And if we do not opt out of the parking provision, the it means that if we have a five-bedroom house, we can only, we can only require two parking spaces. And when we finally get around to updating our zoning regs the next time, we should probably, in my opinion, tailor the number of parking spaces to be, have some correlation with the number of bedrooms, just, just my opinion. But the most important one is the third one. And the third one is, it is a very sophisticated one. But the key of it is that if we do not opt out, the, the law will require that we allow an accessory apartment in the backyard of virtually every single family dwelling if space is available and that the health, health and safety requirements can be satisfied. Just as we opted out of temporary healthcare structures because we did not want permanent, we did not want things in the backyard. I think the town should opt out of the accessory apartments in the backyard for essentially the same reason. Because the town cannot discriminate against double-wide mobile homes, that means that a double-wide mobile home could be placed in people's backyards. And I don't think that's fair to the neighbors. I don't think it's fair to the aesthetics of the town. I don't think it's consistent with, with, with our goals. So I urge that the town opt out. Opting out also has a huge advantage because in our efforts to update our affordability housing, if we do not opt out, opt out of the as, as we're allowed to do so, if we do not opt out, our hands are tied when we write these, when we update our regulations. We can still provide affordable housing. We can still do whatever we want to do if we opt out, but it will be much easier to do what we want to do and still be consistent with the intent of the statute if we opt out first. So I strongly urge that we opt out first. The Planning and Zoning Commission has to take the first action, has to be a public hearing. It has to be a two-thirds vote to opt out, and then that will be followed up by the town council doing the same thing. But we, and we have a year to do it, but I, but we should not, we should not wait until the last moment. And like I said, if we opt out now, it, we will, we will get much, much better zoning regs as far as affordable housing is concerned. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks. My recollection of why we opted out of the the granny pods, the accessory medical units was because we thought that that was actually a poor way to implement that. And at about the same time as when we made the first change to our accessory apartments to make that more lenient. So my recollection on why we did that is a little bit different. We certainly will discuss the statute regarding accessory dwelling units in the future. So I appreciate that. Anyone else in the public wish to speak?
Yes, this is John Rataleco. Forty Long Pond Road in Ledyard. I'd also like to speak to the same, the same issue as Eric just did. And I know right now the, the state is making a big push for affordable housing. And I think we need to keep in mind the fact that affordable housing really is just a nomenclature for a, a state policy, the eight thirty G. If you look at the town of Ledyard, the town of Ledyard has in fact a significant amount of affordable housing. That being, you define as, say, housing that the average middle-class working person could afford. We have several neighborhoods which have sufficient affordable housing, but again, they're not in the program. And the, the big issue with something like this is, as Eric said, you know, people putting trailers or things like that in their yard. It comes down to enforcement. And we need to be very, very careful before we pass any additional regulations that you look and say, how are we going to enforce that? It's one thing, you know, we have several things in the town. We have a blight ordinance, which I don't know that we effectively enforce. And now we have short-term rental, which some people obviously would claim is not being enforced. And, and so if we have something like this, you know, what, what are your guidelines going to be when somebody says, well, that's, that's just affordable housing I'm putting in there? You know, how do you prove that? How do you, how do you regulate that? And again, with the staff we have, it would be very, very difficult. And also with the, the nature, the rural nature of our town, you can imagine how someone could be, do something like this with the town not even knowing about it. So again, I'd be very, very cautious on allowing something like this unless you're prepared to absolutely create the staff and fund the staff that would be required to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rataleco. We don't always agree, but I definitely agree on your comment about making sure that any regulations that we pass, we can actually enforce. We certainly have a habit of passing ordinances that we don't follow up on very well. So I completely agree with that, that point. Is anyone else from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, I will move on. We'll make no changes to the agenda at this time. Next up on our agenda is the public hearing for application PZ twenty-one dash resub Fireside Farm Four-Lot Resubdivision Thirty-four Village Drive. This public hearing will be continued until our December meeting. They have to go before Inland Wetlands, and so they'll be in front of Inland Wetlands in December prior to our meeting. Correct, Juliette?
No, they've been to Inland Wetlands already, but the Inland Wetlands has to wait the statutory two weeks for somebody to appeal, so they won't be able to make a decision formally until December seventh, and then you will meet on the ninth, so.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. So there will, we will simply continue that and we will have no action on deliberation of decision on application PZ twenty-one dash ten resub. And we will continue that public hearing until December.
Can you see my screen, by the way?
Yes, we can. We can see the agenda. Is that what you're meaning to show?
Yeah, because it's on a split screen, so I wasn't sure if it was showing up for you or not.
Yeah. Next up is zoning permit number five, six, one, four, property Riverside Mall Incorporated for internally lit sign at one sixty-six Route twelve, Gales Ferry, Connecticut, oh, six, three, three, five. So our zoning regulations require this commission to review all internally lit or electronic signs. So that is why this application is in front of us. So this is a wall-mounted sign for a physical therapy business at Riverside Mall. It meets our size requirements. It's very similar to some of the other signs in, on that mall. If you scroll down, there's pictures attached of other signs on the mall. A couple of them are downlit. Another one of them is internally lit. The liquor store has an internally lit sign. So this seems to fall within all of our regulations. Any comment from staff?
No, in the absence of any lighting standards, I, I wasn't sure how to review it. So it seems to, like you said, appear to be similar to the other ones in town. I don't think it's an issue at all.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the internally lit sign application. Where's the language?
And I would second that.
I think that's fine. Approve application zoning permit number fifty-six, fifty-six fourteen for an internally lit sign?
Yes, please.
Perfect. We have a second from Mr. Boudreaux. Last chance for discussions on the motion. Hearing none, I will call a roll. Chief Chief, Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Capeon?
Yes.
Mr. White Scarver?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion passes five oh. Thank you all.
We have now since learned how to do the action items on iCompass, so next time you will have your motions. We learned that after we did the agenda.
Next item on our agenda is site plan application number PZ twenty-one dash twelve site fifteen twenty-eight Route twelve, Gales Ferry, Connecticut, oh, six, three, three, five, in the Gales Ferry Design District. Applicant Patrick and Sarah Scully, ten Hillcrest Drive, Waterford, Connecticut. This is for a new forty-foot by sixty-foot taproom, new forty-foot by sixty-foot fabric building, parking, landscaping, and all other associated site improvements. So it looks like we are still waiting for a few pieces on this, but do we have someone? Do we have the applicant or representative of the applicant here tonight?
Yes.
Who is that?
Seamus Moran, and it looked like we had Clint Brown in the room as well.
Mr. Moran, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Nancy, what's probably the best thing for us to look at? Would it be the full plan set? Is that what? What should we be, call up on the screen?
Yep. Six. It's coming. That's big file.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Moran, you want to give us a walkthrough of the application?
Sure. Yes, please. Good evening, commission. Thanks for having me. My name is Seamus Moran. I am a professional engineer in Connecticut. I work for Larraro Engineering Associates. And I am representing the applicant Sarah and Patrick Scully for their project that, the site that you see before you, fifteen twenty-eight Route twelve in the Gales Ferry section of Ledyard. You're here for a site plan application for our taproom. We have also submitted to Inland Wetlands because there is an inland wetland body on our property. So we submitted to Inland Wetlands on November second. That was heard at the Inland Wetlands meeting on November ninth for receipt. I presented there. They determined it was not a significant activity. We also submitted to Ledlite Health District on November second. And as of this morning, they haven't had a chance, haven't had the chance to review it yet, and they're hoping to get around to it later today, meaning around four o'clock today. So I believe it's, it's on their, on their agenda for, for short review in the next couple of days. We should have more by the next meeting. As I mentioned, it was received for Inland Wetlands last month or last week, two weeks ago, and it won't be heard until, or won't be able to be voted on until the next Inland Wetlands meeting on December seventh. So this plan you see before you, this is the existing conditions plan. The whole parcel is about three point eight acres, just a little bit over three point eight. There is a, as I mentioned, the wetlands on the property that, which were flagged by Jim Cowan in May of this year. It's about point three acres of wetlands. We are in the Gales Ferry Design District as well, which you might remember this piece because we were before you a few months ago to change from the CID to the Gales Ferry Design District. So that was approved in September earlier this year to go back to the GFDD district. There is water and sewer avail, I'm sorry, not sewer, water and overhead power is available in Route twelve. There's a fifteen or a sixteen-inch main out there. We will be connecting to both of those. There's also a, on the, if you see on the right-hand side, the east side of the parcel, there's a very steep slope. About a two and a half to one slope on the east side where the bottom of the slope is elevation ninety and the top is about one thirty. So it's about a forty-foot hill on the east side of the property. What you see in the middle of the property existing is a pretty flat area and it's a little unique because you can see the two, there's two mountains, one on the north side and one on the south side. Thank you, Juliette. And that was actually previously connected. There was a big ridgeline that went through the middle of the property. The site is fantastic sand and gravel. What happened was back in two thousand and seven, an inland wetlands permit was approved for a wetland crossing. Shortly after that was approved, somebody came in sometime between two thousand and eight and two thousand and ten and mined out that good sand and gravel to leave essentially a flat level ground right now, you see now. Which, once we get into the next page, you'll see we're trying to develop the site in what's currently the flat level area right now. So that's the existing conditions in a nutshell. Juliette, she's, she's good at this. So this is here is the site plan. What you see before you are proposing a twenty-four hundred square foot taproom. It's a metal building that will just have, it'll just serve craft beer in a tavern style. There's also a forty by sixty, twenty-five, twenty-four hundred square foot fabric building is what it's called. It's actually just a metal structure with a canvas over it, almost like a metal tent, which will be used to shield any of the exterior patrons just during the elements. So the, the use of the property is actually going to be a dog-friendly taproom, almost dog-friendly tavern. So they will allow dogs. It'll be dog-friendly. And that area over there in the fabric shop, yep, that's correct, that will be where they can, where people can bring their dogs in case it rains or if it's too sunny, something like that. It will not have any service. It will not have tables or anything in there. It'll just be, have an open space for people to bring their dogs.
Is, is that one of those tents that has attachable fabric walls or is it a tent just to be a roof?
It will have fabric sides as well. So it'll be, it'll be, it'll be shielded on each side.
Right.
And a roof. Um, behind the, the twenty-four, I'm sorry, behind the twenty-four hundred square foot taproom, there'll be a twelve hundred square foot patio. And then beyond that, which is, looks like a gravel, almost sand hatch, there'll be an extended patio. This is about eighty-seven hundred square feet, which will just be an area to congregate or it'll be some, maybe some lawn chairs out there, people, so people can walk their dogs. Maybe some fire pits potentially in the future, but I'm pretty informal back there. What you also see is there's twenty-eight parking spaces. There's also two accessible spaces. The twenty-eight spaces is more than the zoning regulations, but we also think that the use that we're proposing, it's not really too well-defined in the regulations. It requires six spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area, where we think a lot of the exterior of the building will be used as much as the interior. So the building itself requires fifteen spaces, but we do think that we would need to beef that up a bit because of the exterior uses provided on the property. We're providing twenty-eight total parking spaces, a dumpster pad with an enclosure on the southwest side. Thank you. As mentioned, two accessible handicap parking spaces. And there's a concrete walkway in the front of the building as well, that will provide separation between the parking area and the building. And that's it for the site plan. Juliette, if you go to the next page, please.
So if I could, a quick question on that. The, the spaces that are labeled for food truck, are those regularly sized spaces or are those larger spaces or do they have power hookups or what's the?
Good, good question. So they're regularly sized spaces, but there's that access strip, yeah, correct, right there. There's that access strip. So if people were to be getting food, they can go in between the trucks. The hookups will be directly outside the building. So if a food truck were to pull in, they could, they could run their cords directly to the side of the building there.
Great, thank you.
While we're on parking, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So is, is, are you providing two accessible spaces because they're both required or is one additional to the requirement?
Correct. So it's, it's in addition. So under twenty-five, you're only required one. So we're only required to have one space, but we're providing twenty-eight. So because we're providing twenty-eight, it's, we're providing two extra spaces, so.
Okay. Yeah, the code used to let you share a loading, unloading spot, and now they don't. So, but I believe if you're only required to have one, if you were required to have two, you would need two loading zones. So.
Even if it's two van-accessible spaces to have a shared space?
I believe they got rid of that in two thousand and eighteen. Yeah.
Oh, they did. I'm dating myself here. I can look into that.
Okay.
Hey, I think that's probably it on this page. If you go to the next page, please.
As it, are the food trucks accessible? Can you get off the sidewalk to go get something from the food truck?
Um, good question. So it's, you can't get in between into that strip there. So that, that's a really good point. And we could put a ramp in there to get, so if people have to get down in between the food trucks, we can put a ramp in, so it's accessible. I'll make a note of that right now.
My comment, so it's in there.
Yeah, thank you. So on the next page is the stormwater plan, which there's, there's quite a bit going on. It looks like a pretty busy plan just because of the topography on the site. So we're proposing is a bio-retention basin, which you can see right there. Thank you. And that is sized to infiltrate the water quality volume. And it also knocks down the peak rates of runoff for the two, I'm sorry, for the ten through the hundred-year storm event. There's a point oh-two CFS increase for the two-year, which is insignificant. Close from like, I believe, a point oh-seven to point oh-nine. It's a very minor increase, but all the main storm events are a decrease above that. So ten to the hundred is a, is a, is a decrease in the peak rates. One interesting thing about the basin is the soils on site are all hydrologic group A soil, so it's very fast of percolation rates, permeabilities. So in the, in the basin, we ended up having two permeability rates, one in the upper soils of one point six inches per hour, but in the lower underlying soils, we had a permeability rate of twenty-five point two inches per hour. What we don't want is, yeah, we don't want water to go through it that quickly. Proposing is what we stole from the Rhode Island Stormwater, Stormwater Design Manual, is to create a soil matrix in the bottom of the basin that you can create a, essentially a soil that permeates, you know, one, one inch per hour and two inches per hour, which is very consistent with the one point six inches per hour that we found in the upper soil of the other test bit one there. So it'll allow some detention in the basin. It'll allow some of the uptake of the nutrients in the basin itself. So it won't fly right through the basin, but it is designed to infiltrate the water quality volume. So that's, that's, that's the main practice. In addition, we're proposing on the east side, you'll see an underdrain. So all the stormwater that's coming from the up gradient side, the east side of the property, we're going to capture in an underdrain system. And so the clean runoff that's coming from off, coming down the hill, we'll capture that and reroute it around. So the clean runoff will be captured and cleaner runoff will be discharged pretty much at the hundred-foot review line. Yep, just as, as you were shown, shown there. So we will, it's a low impact development feature to kind of capture a runoff before it gets into the parking lot areas. And last but not least, on the southern side, there's a little bit of a swale that we're proposing right there that will direct runoff from the southeast corner of the property and try and redirect that runoff, that little bit of runoff remaining as it currently exists down the slope over on the south side. And last but not least, on the west side of the parking lot, we are proposing a grass swale. Just any runoff that ends up into the parking lot will be collected and redirected in this grass swale into the basin. And that's a low-impact development feature. And instead of catch basins and structures, it just allows a little bit more treatment in the grass flow. So I think that's it for the stormwater plan unless anybody has any questions on the sheet.
I appreciate that. You're, you're kind of sitting in holes, aren't you?
Yeah, that's right. Well, they took out, they took out all the good soil a couple of years ago. Now we're kind of sitting in a nice flat area, but it is, we, we went with a gravel parking lot. We went with a gravel extended patio because the soil is fantastic out there. So we're trying to allow for, you know, some infiltration. We don't want to capture everything. We don't need to. We have about eight to ten feet of, of good soil between our surface and our groundwater. So we're going to allow some of that to infiltrate and treat just naturally.
Yep.
What's the width of the driveway access?
Twenty-four feet wide. Oh, and actually, Kay, that's a really good point. Thank you for bringing that up. So the paved area that you see, I forgot to mention this, the paved area that you see, this was all part of the two thousand and seven approved wetland crossing plan. So everything from the east edge of the pavement out to the road was previously approved. It was never installed. The only part that was installed was some material, material was brought in to cross the wetlands. So you get in there to take the material out, but they never constructed the road and it was never, the grades were never finalized. So we're proposing to finalize the grades for the oh-seven approved plan and install the pavement for that approval as well. So those, the three, the, the right turn only, left turn only in the entrance lane, those are all twelve feet wide. So it's thirty-six feet wide at the street and then it tapers down to twenty-four feet wide on the interior side.
Juliette, did Mr. Maslin take a look at the sightlines at the driveway?
Um, probably not if it wasn't in his memo. But that was, I'm not sure how this lot was originally created because I was trying to look for anything original, but I, I don't know, maybe, um.
Yeah, I can jump in. Sorry. So we actually did just submit a plan to DOT for their review. This was reviewed, this was reviewed in two thousand and seven and they, the previous plan had provided, I believe, four hundred feet of sightline distance. And the response coming from the DOT was that the eighty-fifth percentile speed fires, I think, five hundred and fifty-five feet of sightline distance. So we now show that, we show that on a plan that was submitted to DOT actually on Tuesday or Monday of this week.
Mr. Maslin actually wouldn't review this. I forgot. That's the state road.
Yep, great.
But maybe you could provide a copy for the file?
Be nice.
Of course. Okay. I think that's it on this page unless there are more questions on that page. The next page is utilities and erosion and sediment control. As I mentioned, we're, we're, there's a main water main in Route twelve, proposing a water service line or a water line into the site. What's not shown on here, which has developed since these plans are submitted, is, is also going to be, which were shown in the mechanical and electrical plans, is that there's going to be an eight-inch fire sprinkler line. So it'll be one line coming in, I believe, to a one and a half inch domestic service line and an eight-inch fire protection line. So the building will be sprinkled as per the latest MEP plans, which is, which will get, Nancy, I'm sorry, Juliette had a comment and one of her comments earlier today about near as fire hydrant, the building will be sprinkled and there will be a, a fire connection on the side. Underrun electric will be provided off the utility pole. It's just south of the main entrance. And that's shown there. And everything will enter on the west side of the building. Erosion sediment control is another one. It's, we have, on the down gradient edge of all the improvements, we do have a set, a soap fence, soap fence backs hay bales in area where we're, we're proposing some disturbance. There's also, if we do find any topsoil when we're excavating, there is a temporary soil stockpile area on the north side right there. That will have a soap fence around that as well. And lastly, is a construction entrance is proposed out at the road. So that's it for this sheet, I believe. Most of your questions? And I think the next sheet is the landscaping and lighting plan.
I'm sorry, did, do we have a bond estimate yet? I'm sorry, did, uh, do we have a bond estimate yet? For the, okay.
Sorry, no, go ahead. The lighting plan, we just received the photometric plan earlier this week. Well, those light poles that we show on here, based on the photometric plan, there'll be fourteen foot tall poles, which are certainly not excessive. I think they'll fit nicely on the site and then you can see the significant landscaping, which. I am not a great descriptor. I will not be providing great descriptors of the landscaping we're providing, but. We do have an in-house landscape architecture division, CR three at La Rero, and they provided the landscape plantings for the, for the site.
Just a, a general comment, I appreciated the locations of the couple of trees on the north side there. You know, sort of, you know, because you got the two hills kind of blocking it. And so a couple of trees in there to fill in that space. I appreciated that choice.
Thank you. I will pass the, pass the word along. Thank you. I think that's it on this sheet.
You have the specs of the lights on that sheet as well?
It'll be on the details plan. If you scroll to sheet, maybe twelve or thirteen. I think we just have one.
So they're, they're full cutoff. That's good. Yeah, those are much better. They're not glare bombs. A good choice.
Okay, thank you.
What were the lights that were up front that were uplit lights?
On the building?
No, it showed a note in the entrance. Two uplit lights in the entrance?
Oh. I, I think they're future sign lights. We don't have an actual sign for, propose now, but we did want to take into account that there will be a sign. So there are ground mount lights for a future proposed sign, which we don't. We don't know if the sign will be, what the sign will look like at this point. But it's just, we wanted to plan for a sign in the future that will have to come back before you at some point. So those are.
So the lights are right here, that yellow that I'm looking at?
Correct, that are supposed to be. I guess flooding the, the sign just with enough light to see the sign.
So the idea is you've got a little landscaped area there with some sort of a ground mounted sign there and lights pointing at the sign.
Correct, yep. With just a future sign, but nothing proposed with this application, just like.
Yeah, and, and just to comment, since, since we're not going to be able to approve this site because we're missing a couple of things. If, if you can get the details for that sign added to this plan, we would be able to approve, approve it all at once.
Okay, I'll, I'll see if they.
And those lights, yeah.
And the, the uplights, okay. I, I will talk to the applicants about that. And I think the last page, I don't want to eat the dead horse is just a septic plan. There is not public sewer available. So if you can scroll to the next page, you're frozen.
I'm frozen?
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Maybe mine was frozen. So this is the septic page. Thank you. The septic is in the south side of the building. Like I mentioned, we have great soils on there. The percolation rate was just over one inch per hour. I'm sorry, one inch per minute. So it was, uh, it was very quick. It wasn't a. Critical area where we'd have to provide additional separating distance, but we would have that anyway. But the system is designed for, it's just under two thousand gallons per day with. With the fabric shop building as an industrial use, just to have something in there and also for the, the seating capacity in the building. So that's the septic design. I believe that's, that's it for the site plans. There were some comments that Julia provided, which we do have some responses to. I'm not sure if we want to go over those now, Juliette, or wait until the next meeting, or we could handle those. Offline before the next meeting, what would you like?
Offline is fine.
Okay. So I believe that's it for the site plan. If anybody has any questions, I'm, I'd be happy to take those now.
Questions from the commission?
I might, I have a question, I guess, might be for discussion or clarification for us on the board. When an applicant business intends to use a lot of outdoor seating. Do our regs provide any requirements for additional restrooms for anticipated higher occupant count at all?
Covered under building and health code.
So that's in, in that section. Okay.
I have a curious question on the architect, architecture. The overhead doors, are they sort of windows or?
In good weather, they're planning to open those up and allow, allow those to be open all day, for the most part, so they can allow more. Free access of the exterior and interior of the use. I think that's the purpose of the overhead doors. They do like, I mean, I, I know one of the comments was they don't have a lot of windows or anything, but I think they do like the industrial use, some of the, some of the inspiration boards that I saw from them. Was a lot of industrial style look to it. So I think that's the look they were going for with them.
Yeah, well, and, and I'll say those roll up doors are very common in tap rooms. You know, I mean, outer light has lots of places have them because you can just throw them open and then you got that nice patio. So I, yeah, it's, I think it's very typical for the use.
It's kind of cool.
Yeah.
And you can get them with glass in them too.
Any other sheets you want to see here? Anyone?
Yeah, any other general questions from the commission?
Now, what do you think the capacity is going to be of the brew, brew part, considering you only have two thousand gallons per day and you're septic?
I did do a seating calculation for that. Let me tell you what that was.
It was a hundred and fourteen seats total.
Okay, that's it. Hundred and fourteen seats.
You're not going to actually brew anything there?
No, so it's, it's just a tap room with coolers. They are not going to be brewing anything in there. And that seating count, it was forty four interior tabletop chairs, fourteen bar seats. Forty exterior tabletop seats on the patio and then eighteen bond chairs on the extended patio. For a total of a hundred and sixteen seats.
Any other questions from commissioners on the layout or anything?
Do you have any charging for electric vehicles?
We do not have any charging for electric vehicle, vehicles.
Okay, just curious. What about power for food trucks?
That will be on the west side of the building. They're planning to have some hookups on the west side of the building. So if you can scroll maybe to the next page, to that, in the, there's an office. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. So in that, what you see there is the bottom right of the building. That's actually the front left of the building. It's kind of oriented. Upside down. So yeah, there'll be some hookups on, right on that wall right there. Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, I, I think all this looks good. It looks like we've got a few paperwork things. That we need to close out. So you had a couple of issues Julie had to work through. Handicap ramp, handicap ramp and a couple of things there. Getting the information on the DOT application would be good. And we're waiting for ledge light response. So it looks like we're still looking for, waiting for a, a few pieces of paperwork. What's that?
In wetlands.
Yes, thank you. And so it looks like we'll, we'll continue you for tonight. I, I don't see any, any problems or concerns that I want you to address between now and our next meeting. Any commissioners have any issues that they'd like them to try to address before our next meeting? It's your last chance. Uh, hearing none then, I, I thank you for the presentation, Mr. Moran. So finish up those last bits of paperwork and we'll see you again in December. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thanks for your time tonight.
Okay, next item on our agenda is just the old business, which is an, an item that we've been carrying. For housing and ADUs, no action on that tonight. Next item under new business is Mr. Heller, informal discussion regarding the. Future use of the former Dow chemical property.
Okay.
Sorry about that. My screen freaked out, right? I decodia, I'm sorry about that. Please, Mr. Heller.
Thank you, Juliette. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Harry Heller. I'm an attorney in Uncasville, Connecticut, and I'm representing Cashman dredging and marine contracting. With me this evening is Clint Brown from La Rero, who is the project civil engineer. As well as Chase Davis and Alan Perrall from Cashman, who can jump in whenever they feel appropriate. And Andrew McCoy, an associate in my office. Cashman dredging and marine is a regionally significant re developer. Of waterfront properties on the east coast. The brochure that Juliette has on the screen is a delineation. Of representative projects that Cashman has redeveloped. And the common theme among all of the projects are that they were waterfront properties. They all had environmental issues, all had regulatory constraints. And Cashman was successful in redeveloping these properties. And returning them back to productive use while addressing the environmental challenges. That were outstanding with respect to them. And their, their projects are up and down the east coast of the United States. This is important because I'm, I'm sure you're all familiar with the former Dow chemical property, which is. Owned now by Trinseo LLC, which was a spinoff from Dow. But the property lies between Route twelve and the Thames River. And it has rail access to the Providence and Worcester railroad. It also has a significant dock along the waterfront on the Thames River. Which currently accommodates a tanker that comes in once a month, bringing raw product to. America's Dygenics, which is a tenant of a portion of the property. It, which continues to operate and will continue to operate if and when. Cashman is successful in acquiring this property. The property does have environmental contamination. So it, it has many of the attributes of the other properties that Cashman has successfully redeveloped. Dow vacated the property, I believe in two thousand and ten. And they have ongoing remediation obligations on the property. And Trinseo will also have remediation obligations that were in the process of. Negotiating at this point. Cashman intends to redevelop this property. First of all, to accommodate their marine operations in the Connecticut and New York area. Which will. Incorporate bringing in a number of their barges and, and other dredging equipment. For use in both the Connecticut and New York areas. As well as, in all likelihood, extending significantly the dockage. Which is currently onsite, a portion of which needs to be rebuilt in order to meet the. Structural capacity requirements of Cashman, but also to. Allow sufficient dockage to accommodate both the tanker that brings raw material to Trinseo. As well as Cashman's needs. So at this point, I, I think I'd like to have Alan Perrall just give an overview of. Cashman's vision for the redevelopment of this project.
Okay, thank you, Harry. We welcome the opportunity to work in Ledyard. As Harry mentioned, we've worked on projects. I've been with Cashman for pushing forty years, which gives you an idea of how old I am. And generally have worked on all these type of projects. The beauty of this site is the, mainly the location of Ledyard, New London in relation to open water. As you go further south in Connecticut, you pretty get, well, get inside of Long Island Sound. Which limits your accessibility to open water. As many of you are probably aware, the state pier is being rebuilt right now is an offshore wind staging facility. We did a very similar thing. It's in one of these slides for the state of Massachusetts in New Bedford. So we already have one contract that will not trigger till October of next year, but it's dredging about a hundred and sixty thousand yards. Of material to help facilitate that project, which is a multi, multi million dollar project. But we do see this site is being, we have a yard right now in Quincy, Massachusetts, which is also shown on that site. Where we have, we generally, in many of these sites, not only run our own business. But we tend to find like tenants, you know, to help support the site as a whole. I mean, typically a marine staging yard needs to be about ten to fifteen acres. This site's about a hundred and sixty four acres, so way in excess of what one would need for our own uses. America's Dyrenics use leases about twenty five acres. So there's a lot of potential here for doing other things. In our site in Quincy, we have a General Dynamics robotic submarine company. We have kind of the back tanks of the New England Aquarium. We have a salt, a large salt distribution company. So those are kind of examples of marine dependent units. And that's what we feel the beauty of this site is, is twenty five to thirty feet of water in the Thames River at that point. And we, we have a yard right now in Staten Island and we have our yard in Quincy, Massachusetts. And this would be in the sweet spot, kind of in the middle of the two. And there's a lot of offshore work proposed in both Connecticut, New York and New Jersey, and which is, I believe, why the state is investing. You know, tens of millions of dollars and creating a staging site there. So we do see this site. When you have a project like the state pier for offshore wind, there's a lot of ancillary work that comes out of that. You know, so obviously that site's being designed to handle turbines themselves, the large blades. But there's a lot of other work that will be, be necessary, whether it's stone, electrical contractors and others. So we've often, when we worked in Massachusetts, have, if we didn't do a major contract, we oftentimes had. Ancillary work because we're in the marine equipment leasing business as well. So we've probably staged a number of our vessels there that would be available for leased other contractors who need to access. The offshore wind projects. So that's kind of in a nutshell of some of the things we do. And like Harry said, up and down the east coast, we've even done things as far away as Bermuda. We stayed something for the Americas Cup. So if it's got a marine orientation, that's really our sweet spot, which is why this site is attracted, attractive to us. And the fact it has a rail right through it as well as, you know, good access to the highway. It's not right off of it, but it's off of a commercial road. So it really feeds, features most of the criteria you're looking for. Thank you.
And just to hearken back to the regulations for a moment. We, we were going through the list of the permitted uses in your industrial zoning district, which of course is the zoning district classification for this property. And there, there are several categories that Cashman's operations fit into. That are permitted uses in the industrial district, including boat docks, slips, piers, wharfs. And buildings, manufacturing, maintenance and recycling. Of course, there will be recycling of material. Cashman will be bringing dredged material to the site. That material is dewatered. Initially, there is going to be. A use for a significant amount of that material on the site itself because. because Dow has removed most of their buildings from the site. What remains is related to the Trinseo operation. But the foundations have not been removed. And because there is contamination involved in that site, one of the remediation measures that is approved by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection is the capping of those areas. So a significant amount of this material will be stabilized. There's a process where they mix it with concrete to stabilize it, and that will be used to cap areas, to permanently encapsulate those areas of environmental contamination. Once that is done, the stabilization procedures are utilized to stabilize the material so that it can be hauled off-site either by rail or by truck. What's also important is that Cashman's use is a water-dependent use. Obviously, this property is in the coastal management area. So these are water-dependent uses that would meet the goals and requirements of the Coastal Area Management Act. So we, we feel it's a good fit. It's a good location for Cashman. We believe that this will be good development for the town of Ledyard. It's not development that will occur overnight. It takes years to redevelop these sites. But that's why Cashman's track record is important, because they do have a proven history of successfully redeveloping these sites, providing good industrial growth for the communities that they're in, that produce jobs and also produce ratables for the community. Clint, I don't know if you wanted to add anything particularly maybe with respect to your meetings with Deep?
Yes, if I may. I'm Clint Brown with LaRero Engineers. I'm joined tonight by Susan Marquardt. We're both from the Groton office at 104 Hill Road in Groton. With your permission, we do have a couple of exhibits that we'd like to screen share with you to show you what things look like and put them in perspective based on, you know, what you've heard from Harry and Alan. So if we could do that, that would be great.
That's fine with me.
I think you're able to share. Everybody is, yeah.
Great. Susan's gonna bring it up. Great.
We can see a Google map.
Yeah, you're looking at a Google aerial map. And again, this is the, this is this, the site on the east side of the Thames River. The river's on the left. The existing complex is, is right to the east of that, and you can see Route 12 up and down the sheet. So some of the things that we were, you've heard mentioned, if you start on the riverside, you can see there's a, the, the point, you know, it's called Allen's Point, the point there, if you will. You can see the pier extending off to the south, and it's a substantial structure in, in length. It's several hundred feet long, and it, it provides a place for a ship that brings materials to the, to this manufacturing facility to, to berth and to offload by piping methods to tanks that are around the property that store the materials until they're needed for the manufacturing process. So between the, the river and the railroad tracks, which are right along the river, that's where that particular activity occurs. To the, to the south, that's the existing manufacturing facility. And as you heard, it's about 25 acres in total, includes buildings, some laydown area, pipe bridges, things of that nature. Moving northerly a little bit, you'll see like a, a black irregular shape. That is a, a body of water. I believe it's called Allen's Pond. And that is the stormwater facility that has been used for quite a number of years to manage stormwater on the site, and it discharges under the railroad tracks to the Thames River. Just to the north of that is another, what appears to look like a complex of buildings. And at one time, it was. It was the latex manufacturing plant, and that was in place for many years, finally decommissioned in around 2015, and ultimately demolished in 2018. What remains there now is various pads, building pads and foundations. And that is the area where Cashman would focus their initial efforts to utilize the property. So obviously, though, there'll need to be some site work done there. We haven't gotten into doing any plans yet, but that's where the, the site work activity would initially be occurring to support their operations. As Harry indicated, we also had some, have had some conversations with Connecticut Deep about this project. And Susan, if you could go to the next slide, I'd appreciate it. So again, this is a, a blow up along the waterfront, and you can see the size of that ship that, that burst there at the, the dock. So one of the challenges that I think Cashman and the owners have resolved is the pier area needs to be shared by both that, by both the ship, which only comes occasionally to, to offload and Cashman's operation. So they've come up with a plan that provides enough space to accommodate the ship and also a 300-foot section along the pier that can accommodate Cashman's operations. And that will be done by extending catwalks off the north and south end of the existing pier. You can see those in, in yellow at both ends. And also upgrading a portion of the existing pier. That's that rectangular yellow area just opposite the tanks to accommodate Cashman's equipment that will operate on the pier between the, the waterside and the landside to transfer the material to the land so it can be brought up to that, that site that I showed you. So earlier this week, we had a, a nice pre-application session with Deep. Very helpful in terms of their perspective on things and, and advising us on what type of permits required. We think it's a certificate of permission, which is a nice abbreviated process. And they saw no significant issues with the work that, that Cashman is planning. And they were quick to recognize that it's a water-dependent use, that it fits in, fits in well with, with the coastal management program and everything we, we try to do in that vein. You can see also on this plan in that purplish color, that's the, some recent bathymetry that was done, showing depths of water. And if you honed in on those, you could see that they're in the neighborhood of 25 feet deep in that area. And the navigation channel is also shown. So we've considered a lot of things to make sure that this process works. Obviously, it hasn't been engineered yet, but part of the process we're embarking on tonight is to, is to complete some due diligence and to interact with agencies such as yours to, to understand if you have any areas you are interested in or what you believe the requirements would be. So that's pretty much it from the, the engineering side.
And again, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, we wanted to explore this with the Commission on an informal basis as part of our due diligence process. We're still a long way from a closing on this property. There's a lot of due diligence to be done. But certainly, if the municipality sees any significant roadblocks to this repurposing of this property, would like to explore your, your concerns in, in order to determine whether or not this is feasible. And if you do have concerns, how we may be able to address them.
Questions or comments from the Commission for anyone here?
I have one question. The property we're talking about is all on the west side of Route 12? Or is any of it on the east side?
No, it's, it's all on the west side.
Okay, thank you. There was a brimmed-up reservoir on the, on the east side 45 or 50 years ago. And I didn't know how this applied, and I just wanted to know where we stood. Thank you.
Yeah, Dow did own some property on the east side of Route 12. And, and they may have one parcel left, which is not part of this transaction. But most of it was bought by Peter Gardner and his group when he developed that residential subdivision that was back before you, I don't know, maybe 12, 15 years ago.
Okay, Dow did own the property there all the way up to Whalehead at one point.
Yeah.
But I have no idea what he owns now.
Yeah. But our, our purchase agreement contemplates only the property between the river and Route 12.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a fair question. Other Commissioners?
Yeah, just a question on water and sewage. Would you be looking for, for that to be put in? Especially the sewage part?
Um, maybe down the road. Initially, for Cashman's use, they're not going to need those utilities. But as the property becomes redeveloped, certainly, there are significant limitations to commercial industrial development if you don't have utilities.
Other questions from Commissioners?
Just for, just for the Commissioners, you know, since my position at sector, you know, this piece of land, I think in the last five weeks, we've gotten three inquiries, either from Advance Connecticut or some other entities concerning Allen Point. So there's, there's a definite desire to see someone develop this.
Yeah, thank you. Harry, no other questions from other Commissioners? You know, I'll, I'll say that, you know, look, we've, we've been looking for a reuse of this property for quite some time, since Dow started exiting the site. It's been an industrial site for decades. And so the reuse of it as an industrial site seems to be fitting with what historically has occurred here. It'd be nice to have some marine industry in town. You know, we have a history there, but we don't have much going on right now. You know, I, I think certainly, you know, as this moves forward, we, we have to take a, a, a hard look at, you know, whether what we have got as far as uses in our table right now, support, everything that Cashman might want to do. You know, I think it probably is outside some of the stuff that we have, you know, we contemplated when, when we put that in there. But, you know, in general, you know, the, what is being proposed seems very fitting with the site and what could be done there. So I don't see any major roadblocks that would prevent this type of thing.
Yeah, and I, I think what we're looking for is just some comfort level that there is a willingness on the part of the Commission to work with us. You know, if we need to make some regulatory changes and, you know, dot all the i's and cross all the t's that we work in partnership to get it done and do something that's productive for everyone.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Boudreaux.
Back in about 1952, the town of Ledyard offered Dow Chemical tax-exempt status for 10 years to put that plant in there. And I can tell you, on the 11th year, they were by far the highest taxpayer in the town.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly true. You know, I mean, it's, it's a big valuable site. And so, you know, it does have a lot of, you know, access. You know, to be honest, I didn't actually know that there was any use of that dock anymore. So I, I thought it had been abandoned. I didn't, did not know that there was, it was actively used. And so, I mean, to me, this feels mostly like a continuation of what's already going on there and what has gone there. So I, I don't see anything that scares me, and I think there's not a lot of question that this is something we'd be willing to work with. Any Commissioners want to correct me on that or any comments from staff?
Just as a side note, the tanker was in there Tuesday.
Yeah, fair. I, I believe you. I just, I, I did not know it was still used. I know they still use the, the rail line a little bit. I did not know that dock was used, so.
It's pretty impressive when they, because it pulls in the way it's shown on, on the plan in front of you. But they have to turn that boat in the turning basin to go back out the river. And the, and the river is pretty narrow there. It's pretty impressive to watch them do that.
I'd say it's pretty scary if you're on a 25-foot sailboat. Up and down empty. A lot of freeboard on that vessel. For, for the Commission, you may want to look for, it's been a long time since the Commission's done any significant CAM review. Attorney Heller, I think we did some when the CAM line passed through Tom, not Tom, Alan Court, but the Flatbrook subdivision that Mr. Gardner had done.
Yes, that, that was in the CAM.
But, you know, as far as industrial uses in the CAM and real maritime uses in the CAM, the Commission may seek some additional training from staff or, or another consultant so that you can adequately review it.
Yeah, I, I would certainly think that would be our, our biggest issue going forward, is making sure that we have the right engineering support to review any of these applications, so.
And, and of course, the CAM application will go up to all us for their input. So you're gonna get some input certainly on an operation like this from the state.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an interesting project. Last call for any questions from the Commission while we've got everyone here? Mr. Boudreaux, sorry?
Go for it.
All right, well, thank you all for, for coming and letting us know what's going on. We appreciate it. Would you be willing to send us email those PDFs to Juliette so that we have them for reference?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
All right, and thank, thank you for entertaining us, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
You too, Harry. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a discussion on moratorium for new cannabis establishments. I screwed up the public notice, and so the public hearing for this was not correctly noticed. So we cannot have a formal public hearing on this tonight. But because we did say that we were going to have a public hearing on it, I asked Juliette just to change it to a workshop so that if anyone did come to the meeting and wish to speak on this, they would still have an opportunity to do that. And we'll, if, if anyone does wish to speak on it, we'll move those notes to the public hearing, which we will hold in December. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a potential cannabis moratorium?
I'm, I'm in favor, big time.
Thank you, Eric, for, you know, at least someone saying something. So I appreciate it.
Chairman Woody?
Please, Mr. Nebraska.
So, oh, I, I support the moratorium. I also might add that I would request that we may do something similar to what NO Inc. did, which was not a six-month moratorium, but a one-year moratorium or upon approval of regulations. So the only thing our concern is based upon the state not really coming through with all of the, the information that is needed to make a decision on which way to go, and will likely not until the April or May timeframe. I think six months is too short for anybody really acting on it. So I would recommend that we just change the duration to one year.
Thank you, Mr. Nebraska. It, it was something that, you know, we, we discussed with staff on, you know, whether it was easier to have a six-month moratorium and extend it for six months, or if it was easier to have a one-year moratorium and cut it short. So I appreciate the input. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
As the former base commander, I support a moratorium. As the former base commander, I support a moratorium.
Fair enough. Sorry. Uh, with that, we'll move on to, uh, the approval.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, before you do that.
Please, Mr. Boudreaux.
I spoke to my son, who's a policeman locally. And I asked him if there was any change in since the legalization of marijuana. And he said, yes, there's a whole lot more of operating under the influence and a whole lot more wrecks that can be blamed directly to it. So then I asked him, should we ask the Ledgeit Police Department to be present here to discuss this with us? And he thought that was a really smart idea. So maybe we can add that into our thoughts.
I think that's fair. I I I think, uh, it's probably worth doing to try to, uh, invite someone, um, from the police department, uh, uh, from December. It's a it's a it's a good, it'd be nice to have, uh, their viewpoint, um, and they may have, uh, access, um, to um, uh, data in other states that have legalized marijuana that might be, uh, useful for us us to have. So I agree with that. All right, last chance. Every time I've tried to move on, someone's jumped in, so. Uh, hearing none, uh, we'll move on to, uh, the approval of minutes. Uh, Mr. Capeon, did you want to make a motion? You're muted, Mr. Capeon.
Here we go. Make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected to reflect the members that were present at the last many meetings and the members that vote that were voting.
I will second that.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Capeon. Mr. Boudreaux, second. Uh, any other, uh, comments or corrections? Uh, hearing none, I'll call the roll. Uh, Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
This is Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Capeon?
Yes.
Mr. White Scarborough?
Yes.
Uh, the chair votes yes, so the ma- motion passes five oh. Okay, that ends, uh, our, uh, regular meeting, uh, and so, uh, we will now begin our, uh, annual meeting. Uh, regrettably, Mr. White Scarborough, um, we can't, uh, make an alternate, uh, hold any seats. Um, so I'll remove you as a as a voting member, uh, at this point. Uh, first up, uh, is, uh, the election of officers. Um, as you all know, uh, I will not accept a nomination for chair for next year. Um, a bunch of things have changed in my life, uh, and I simply can't keep up, uh, with being the chair, so we will need, uh, someone else uh, who is willing to, uh, step up to be chair, uh, for next year. And so I can start bullying people, uh, or, uh, we can see if someone, uh, is willing to step forward.
Has anyone expressed interest?
Uh, no one has expressed interest to me, no.
You have, Katie.
No, I have not. I, yeah, um, I don't know if it's a, uh, appropriate for me for this year in my life either, or I would have volunteered earlier.
I I I appreciate that. Um, and so, you know, honestly, when when I was looking at us, uh, my hope, uh, was that I was going to be able to convince Mr. Boudreaux uh, to be, uh, chair. Mr. Boudreaux has been a longtime commission member. You know how to run a meeting. Um, and you are remarkably even-handed, um, which is, uh, what I think is needed, um, for the chair. Um, and so I was hoping that you would be willing to accept a nomination for chairman.
I I I don't think that'll work for me as much as I'd like to do it.
Well, what are we going to do then, commission? So there are four of us here, um, and one of us is going to need to be chair for next year.
Did we speak to Marty Wood about this?
Mr. Wood is unable to be, uh, chair at this point. He's got an ongoing medical issue, uh, which is going to make it difficult for him for the next couple of months.
So I'm currently working about seventy-hour weeks.
Me too.
And and I have, uh, other community volunteer work that I do and, um, a couple personal medical things, so I just, I don't know if I can do it this year.
Yeah. Mr. Capeon, are you willing?
Only if no one else is willing to do it, because I've just come on as a voting member. And that's my, that's my concern. Otherwise, I'd be willing to do it.
Uh, well, I mean, you you've been a member of the commission for several years. Um, I know that you know how to run a meeting, um, which is the primary job of the chairman is to run the meeting. Um, yeah, I'm willing to give you, uh, as much, uh, support as you would like or as little support as you would like.
Well, if I were to take it, I'd need as much as support as you can give me. I can, I can run meetings, so that's not, that's not the issue, but I don't have the level of knowledge that the rest of you do. I'm still trying to learn this position.
If I could comment, um.
Help too.
One of the things that that the commission has an advantage on is we have a new director of land use who brings a lot to the table and can really help whoever is the chair. Uh, more than, you know, I don't want to embarrass Juliette, but I've worked with Juliette for, I hate to say decades, but decades. And and Tony, the only thing I'd say is if you do decide to be chair of planning and zoning, you may have to shed some of your other responsibilities.
Oh, I understand that, absolutely.
And and, you know, leadership position is always, uh, important. And I'll I'll drop back into the background.
I I'll second what Mike said about Juliette. She's an excellent technical resource. Um, she's already, uh, teaching me things that I thought I knew. Um, so she's an asset.
Yeah, I'm willing to do it if no one else, uh, I understand that the rest of you have issues, uh, reasons why you can't do it. I would prefer any one of the other four of you to do it besides me, but if I'm the only one who can take it, I will do it.
Uh, well, and I will nominate, uh, Mr. Capone for, uh, chairman, uh, of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I will second it.
Um, you you know, Tony, li- like I said, I I will give you all the support, um, you know, I can, um, and, you know, you've got Katie as well. Um, and, you know, I think that, you know, we're we're in a place where, uh, everyone's really busy, and so, you know, if you're able to take on, uh, you know, the 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 worry of, uh, uh, managing the meetings, uh, I think the rest of us are are more than willing to step up to make sure uh, that we give you any and all technical support that you need.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I'm going to need a lot of technical support.
Well, I think everybody feels that way when they become chair. I certainly felt that way when I became chair, so.
I understand. I'm I'm willing to do it if no one else is.
I I appreciate it. Uh, I'll call the vote. Uh, all those, uh, in favor of Mr. Capeon, uh, for chair?
Hi.
Hi.
I I need to roll call that. We're in a remote meeting. Uh, Ms. Scanlon?
Hi.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes, hi.
Mr. Woody votes yes as well, uh, so the motion passes three oh. Uh, Mr. Capeon, I'll allow you to make, uh, a, uh, vice chair. Nomination, if you would like. You've got your pick. I think everyone is willing to do it.
That's great. If Katie is willing to continue or Tom, whoever wants to do it, you you, the three of you decide who wants to be vice chair. Don't throw it on me.
I'm willing to continue. That's that's fine, and I don't mind doing a few meetings, you know.
No.
Right.
So that's fine. I just can't, uh, commit to the full chair.
I understand, but you give me an awful lot of help, so.
Okay.
So I I'll nominate, uh, Ms. Scanlon, uh, for vice chair.
I'll second it.
Yep, uh, yeah, Katie's already, uh, run at least one meeting here, um, so, uh, and I think, uh, getting to a place where, uh, you know, we're not super dependent on one person's benefit, um, and so you've got a vice chair who's already run meetings. Uh, all those, uh, if I can't do that, uh, I will call the roll on the vote.
Sorry, who who seconded? Was that Mr. Boudreaux?
Seconded, yep.
That's correct.
Uh, Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Capeon?
Yes.
Uh, and Mr. Uh, Woody votes yes as well. Uh, I will accept a nomination for secretary if Mr. Boudreaux, uh, does not want to do it. Um, Marty was our past secretary, uh, given his issues, um, and his not attendance, I I I don't think he, um, should continue as secretary. Hopefully, uh, next year, uh, he'll be, uh, he'll be back, and if he wants to continue with that, he can. Not sure if I can nominate myself, though.
I'll nominate Mr. Woody as secretary.
I'll second.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'll go ahead and call the bo- the vote. Uh, Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Capeon?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes three oh. Uh, so new officers, uh, for, uh, twenty twenty-two are, uh, Mr. Capeon as chair, uh, Ms. Scanlon as vice chair, and Mr. Lee as secretary. Uh, next up is approval of our meeting schedule. Uh, attached to the agenda, uh, is our, uh, meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two, uh, and, uh, including January of twenty twenty-three. Um, set up as we've we've, uh, uh, always done in the past, uh, it is the second Tuesday, second Thursday uh, of every month. Uh, in addition, we reserve, uh, the fourth Thursday, uh, of every month in case we need to have a special meeting. Uh, we primarily do that because it keeps someone from, uh, stealing the, uh, the annex from us, uh, which has not been particularly necessary for the past couple of years, but maybe next year it will be. You never know. Uh, so, uh, I I did go through, uh, the meeting dates, um, and they all, uh, lined up, so I don't think we've messed this up this year. Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the twenty twenty-two planning and zoning, uh, meeting schedule.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Capeon. Uh, did anyone notice any incorrect dates that needed to be corrected?
No, good.
Great. I'll go ahead and call, uh, the, uh, role, uh, Ms. Scanlon?
Yes, I do see January twenty twenty-three on here. Is that typical?
Yeah, we always schedule, uh, into January.
Okay, that then, yes.
Uh, Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Capeon?
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, Mr. Woody votes yes, so, uh, motion passes four oh. Uh, discussions of goals and objectives of twenty twenty-two. I think this is actually pretty straightforward. Um, this is, uh, the, uh, regulation modifications we need, uh, in order to address, um, uh, affordable housing, um, accessory dwelling units, um, all of those changes that came to us from the state statute. Ms. Hodges has already been working on that, uh, as well as some modernization. It's a reorganization of things. Um, that's going to be, uh, a big job, um, and so I I think that is probably, uh, our objective for next year. I'm not sure that, uh, we should be trying to take on much more than that. Any, uh, thoughts there? Guys are quiet tonight.
Has additional goals?
Yeah, please.
Um, it would be nice if we could wrap up the, um, the whole conversation around the the farm, uh, agriculture, tourism.
Yeah, those are a part of, uh, what, uh, Ms. Hodges is working through. Um, so she has the, uh, recommendations from the ad hoc committee. Um, and so those are, uh, a part of that work as well. And so the hope is that we'll be able, we'll be batching all that stuff up into, uh, one application, uh, instead of having to do, uh, several different staged uh, applications. So, agree, and, uh, yeah, it's definitely a part of that batch of work. Uh, any other thoughts, uh, on, uh, goals and objectives? Uh, hearing none, uh, next up is, uh, discussion of the plenary, uh, budget. Um, uh, not much going on in here. Um, only comment I had is, uh, I'm glad to see uh, the, uh, training, uh, budget has been retained. Um, you know, we haven't, we didn't use it last year because essentially all of the training, uh, was virtual and free. Um, but, uh, when the commissioner training, uh, requirement does start coming around, um, we'll need to make sure that we retain that, because I, my guess is that some of that will return uh, to, uh, fee-based, uh, things, so, um, and since it will be a statutory requirement that we all meet our training requirements, we do want to make sure, uh, that we're able to, uh, pay for that.
I did send a email to Carl Landolina saying something along those lines, because the wetlands folks and the ZBA also would benefit from, you know, instead of everybody going to that law seminar, have the attorney come to you at one of your meetings and, like, maybe one of your extra, you know, for P and Z, one of the extra meetings, so you don't get, take up the entire meeting and just do a specialized, you know, focus on issues in front of you, and that also lets you ask a lot of questions, which I also find, you know, you get lost in the crowd in those bigger events and who give you guys the opportunity to specifically go over things that you're confused about or or want to know more about or updates on statutes and case law. So I was going to ask for a, uh, just a ballpark cost, and then I'll let you know when I get that a response.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, and I I'd certainly recommend, um, you know, if commissioners bounce against something that they are confused about, uh, you know, definitely cue those up with, uh, um, Juliette, so that, you know, we sort of have some topics that, uh, um, you know, that he can discuss, because, you know, I know sometimes we turn around on things, and so, uh, trying to highlight those things and get them written down somewhere um, so that we can actually address them is, uh, is probably a good idea. Uh, a- any other comments on, uh, the budget?
And I'm going to put into the capital the GIS updates and continue on with that, but what we have in there seems to be sufficient for what is planned.
Yep.
And and just a quick, well, uh, go over that in my report. I'll update you.
Fair enough. I did notice that, uh, on the GIS, the orthos are a bit wonky. Uh, they kept flipping on and off when I was trying to look at, uh, look at them today. So I had been updated to two thousand nineteen orthos, and I said, yes, two thousand nineteen orthos, uh, but when I turned them on, sometimes they wouldn't show up and.
There to, it's that layer is a separate layer. Like, if you go to the twenty sixteen and twenty twelve, whatever, they flip back and forth well. But there's something that twenty nineteen is in a different sort of spot and created differently, and it takes forever to load.
Yeah, it's a weird checkbox in the middle of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they're also working on a lot of the shape files, uh, right, exactly right now. That's what they're at that point, that they've added all the layers of the maps that I've given them, or they're adding, so I would imagine maybe that's disrupting it as well.
Yeah.
What portal are those orthos loaded on? I usually use the seat, the southeastern council. Now, on a, on the, you know, the Towns GIS interactive map. With the rest of them, you have to, you click on layers and sort of scroll down, and I can't remember what they're below, but they're, they're in the middle of, like, all the layers list. And all of a sudden, you'll see twenty nineteen ortho.
Yeah.
It's not with.
How often do you update the the COGS maps?
Oh, don't even go there. So I don't know. I don't know, the COG made, I there's, we haven't updated our maps in a while, but I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, Amanda had made a call back when we did the regional plan of conservation and development, but the data she received was the data we had.
Hmm.
Uh, and and our data was old at that time. Um, so, you know, just being able to catch up on subdivisions and other things that we've done. Wet wetlands maps. It had been a decade since we had loaded a wetlands map. Uh, so it it's getting better, but COG was a case of garbage in, garbage out. What we gave them was was not up to date.
Um, we're trying to update all of those, the wetlands map, the open space, and the, you know, just get the new subdivisions in there. Those three taking priority. My house is. Want something else, too, but.
No, those are the priorities. Get getting the subdivisions over the last five years entered correctly is definitely the priority.
Or how about the last ten years? Mine's still listed as part of the development behind me. Your yours is from ten years ago, because they did an update in twenty seventeen. Uh, no. I found another one yesterday, same thing, that should have been updated in twenty twelve, so I don't know when the other updates were done. But as you, as you guys come across those, if you would do me the huge favor of bringing them to my attention, so I can get those specific maps to the guy. I'll certainly do that. I didn't want to bug you. Bug me, that's why I'm here.
I I think we've gotten so used to, uh, you know, things being incorrect, that we we have a mental list of, oh, no, the GIS is just wrong there. We we know the GIS is wrong over there, so you know, just don't worry about it, so, uh, no, good, i- i- if we've, if we've got, uh, if that process is going, that's great, and, uh, yeah.
So one thing I would just recommend is that any of the, uh, commercial or industrial use that goes up the Thames, if you could, uh, at a minimum, get the COGS updated, that would be great, because there's a lot of, uh, a lot of people that are, you know, because of the wind industry and the wind clusters and all this other stuff that's coming into the area, there are a lot of people that are asking about all of the property up and down the Thames.
I will do that.
Uh, next up on our agenda, uh, is a review of the bylaws, um, and this came up for, um, uh, kind of random reason, um, and, uh, it's worth going through. There's a couple of things in here, um, that we really ought to update. Uh, and so I just wanted to take the chance, um, as a commission to to go through. Uh, and so I just wanted to take the chance um as a commission to to go through uh those updates that we probably need to make. Um, and uh, if we're all on board with that, uh, then we can uh put together a markup. Um, and we'll uh send that out for our December meeting uh to to vote on. Um, our bylaws actually make us uh send out uh the proposed amendments prior to the meeting. Um, and so we won't do that tonight, but if we can go through and agree on it, then it should be fine. Uh, so and uh Juliet was kind enough to highlight uh most of the issues. Um, so the first one uh is really under section two, the annual organization meeting. Um, we've held this in November for years. Um, and so we moved it to November to make sure that uh we have time to get it done. Uh, we held it to December a couple of times and ended up having frantic meetings on December uh eighteenth and getting in trouble. Um, so I propose that we change that uh in the bylaws to November.
You could keep it November or December.
Yeah.
Give yourself a out.
That's fair, that that that's better. Uh, the um next up uh is under special meetings. Uh, we have a very old requirement. Uh, that says the call for a special meeting shall be delivered, be delivered to each member of the commission at his or her business or home address. Uh, prior to the date of such special meeting. Well, we haven't ever done that. Um, and we've had special meetings. Uh, so I think we need to update that. Uh, with uh verbiage uh to allow uh electronic delivery uh of that.
I'll put something together and send it out.
Yeah. Uh, next, under manner of voting. Um, so right now it says unless one member of the commission requests a roll call, though, voting shall be by voice vote. Uh, when we are running remote uh or hybrid meetings, we are required uh to do a uh roll call vote. Um, and so, uh, yeah, I guess we can argue that a a commissioner has requested it. Um, my recommendation is that we actually just change that to say uh that uh commission votes are done by roll call vote. Um, it it's it's easier that way, since we switched doing that remotely. I actually prefer it. Uh, there's no guessing about what someone did or didn't. Uh, do, and so I actually prefer the the roll call votes.
So all commission votes are done by roll call vote?
Yep. Any complaints? No. Uh, so next, uh, under uh order of business, um, you'll you'll notice we we had a uh a new. Um, uh, line in our agenda today um that Ms. Hodges proposed. Um, and I I thought it was completely reasonable to uh include a a line item in the agenda for uh preliminary meetings. Or preliminary uh uh discussions. Um, and so just what we had with uh Mr. Heller. Uh, regarding cashman properties to just uh isolate those in a certain place, try to put them near the front of the meeting. Um, so that someone who's coming in for an informal discussion uh isn't, you know, isn't stuck waiting through uh for public hearings. Um, that type of thing, you know, if they want to get in, let's talk to them and let's get it out of the way. Um, so the proposal would be to put that, um, where where did you think Juliet? Under citizens petitions?
Yeah.
Yeah, so between five and six.
Yeah, add preliminary meeting slash workshop.
Yep, I like it. Um, and then the other uh comment I had is, um, you know, we added the all other reports. Um, my proposal would actually be just to delete A and B. Um, there's no reason to have those. Let's just say that's where reports are. Um, and whatever reports we want to put under there, we can, no reason to ha- handcuff ourselves. Any complaints on that one?
As long as we do get a report, you know, a planner report.
Yeah, absolutely. It it this, this just says that, you know, we we don't necessarily have to follow that order. And if we have another report that we want to insert in there, we can without violating this. So, yep, yeah, no intention to get uh. Uh, Mike or Juliet uh out of uh giving their reports.
I'm on Mike.
Sorry, Mike.
I tried, Mike, I tried.
Not happening.
Uh, yeah, um, so that that's uh what I had. I mean, they all seem pretty uh boring and non-controversial. Um, really just clean up so that we're uh there in line with how we actually operate uh today. Um, a- anything else that uh anybody saw in here that they wanted to, that they were concerned about? Yeah, hearing none, so then uh we'll uh uh work up uh the modifications to that and distribute them uh before the December meeting. Um, and then we can vote on that. We are allowed to vote uh on these at at any regular or special meeting. Um, so it's it's not a problem to do that in December. Uh, okay, uh, next item uh uh under correspondence. Uh, I do not have any correspondence. Uh, so we'll move to the reports. Uh, first off, uh, Ms. Hodges, the town planner report.
Okie doke. Um, so, I mean, in this one, I just, uh, you know, we're in the middle of quite a few. Plan reviews, I've had to stand in and for the missing wetlands enforcement person, which is amusing since I'm not a wetlands person, but. Uh, Mr. Cape on can report on how that went, I guess, but seemed to be fine. We're still, uh, you know, actively looking for somebody to fill that role. Um, it's just not a lot of people out there responding. So we're gonna do a little more aggressive uh search, a different me and me job search platform.
We got no applicants or no qualified applicants?
We got one who she had called me several months ago, um, but she hadn't retired yet. She works for Norwich Public Utilities. Um, but she uh, we're just not sure how long she would be, you know, wanting to do the job and. And was more interested in part-time. I mean, the way the job is is right now, it it is a full-time job. If if it's. If Mike were to have to do all that it said that that position has to do, I mean, it's definitely, you need forty hours. So we're we're divvying up the duties right now, but of course, then that cuts into to what I can do on the regs and the grants and all that kind of stuff, so. So we're we're gonna keep trying. Um, and I figured worst-case scenario, one of us goes through the khaki wick. You know, training when it comes back up online, which it still hasn't, so we, none of us can even get the training at this point because it's not available. That one of us will just do it and we'll have somebody in-house that knows what they're talking about, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, if we can't find someone that does both. Um, so that's, that's where we are with that. Um. Like I said, the um, so the grants are moving along. Uh, the town has some interest in applying for. I'm blinking on the name of it, the, the community's challenge grant. Uh, which has come up, which prioritizes, you know, various things like trans uh transit-oriented development, but also infrastructure. Critical infrastructure projects that would support development in a commercial zone, so the thought is to use uh that grant money if we get it to help. Pay for the sewer line extension that would go under that multi-use path. That's covered under the lotsip grant, so it wouldn't, you know, wouldn't qualify as part of lotsip, but it's would sort of do the two in tandem. The lotsip grant application, all the comments from Taiwan were satisfied now and the application is ready to be signed and sent to wherever it goes DOTI soon. Um, so that's happening. Um, so I will, I have to.
I'm amazed and pleased with how well that project has been moving forward. So my compliments to everybody who's been working on that, that has been. It has been very well done.
It's a nice design, so hopefully this all goes smoothly and you get that money and I think we can match it with ARPA funding. So uh, we haven't worked out all of that. The steep grant for the town green is also progressing. The the bids went out for the pole roof. Repair or pole barn roof repair and the concrete pads and things like that. So that's moving along. Um, we've had two new applications for the housing rehab grant, but we're still on. I think we have seventeen right now and we're serving servicing number ten at the moment. So it's a huge waiting list, so there is also a possibility of ARPA funding going it, going into that housing rehab fund to, you know. Beef up that pot of money a little bit, so uh people can be serviced, especially those who are needing a new furnace, given that the winter is coming. So that's, we uh, the the roads are complete for that Ledgerd Meadows Estates. Bellows Drive, I keep wanting to say Berry Drive, but it's Bellows, so that bond was released. Um, and we did get some more money from uh the seventy-seven A Shuville Road subdivision from way back. You divvied up the fee in lieu of into three parts, so you've gotten two out of the three now, but that just came in. That's good. Um, and then we welcome, of course, Nancy, who has started upfront to relieve my duties up there. I, it's been very interesting spending the last two weeks up at the front, but always good to know how everything works up there and she's. Very organized, which makes me very happy. And uh, so we're hoping to get all the files in order and and, you know, just get systems in place, so I think she she'll be a great asset.
As as uh Nancy is a first welcome, has she, has she taken over the land use assistant email address? Yes, okay, great, thank you.
Yep. And it's day four, as she pointed out, and she hasn't quit, so that's a very good. And that's it. So I'm working on a strategic plan for the EDC, feverishly working on your regs. Um, and then I'll let Mike take over from here.
Uh, so the uh, the question I I I did have is that uh we put in. Um, and received uh a grant uh for the um uh town housing.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and but I've lost track of where that, where that is. Is that, is that progressing and moving forward?
Uh, it would have progressed a lot farther and faster had the RFP actually been posted on the website. Uh, but it hadn't, so now it is, I mean, I sent it out to various companies, but I think they're probably waiting for the official one and being too new here to know what exactly that. Full process was. They, I assume things were happening somewhere else that weren't, so. It is now formally up there, so I do, at the closing date is the ninth, I want to say. Of December, but in the interim, I've had um our intern just start gathering some of the information that I know goes in the plan. So just to give him something to work on and he's doing a project for school on affordable housing. He's here, he can chime in, but. So he's done some uh of the background data and we've tracked down all your affordable housing. I will say that the state is not recognizing any of your deed restricted units right now. Because when I asked him to pull up that data, I said, well, what do you mean? It's zero, because I know that there's six. So Mike, Jerry and Jude and I have been verifying that there are in fact deed restrictions in place on. Flatbrook, the Flatbrook subdivision, there's.
Yeah, uh, yeah, Inch Cliff and then Six Ledger Lane. Um, also, there were four dealers, the it, the state showed four deed restricted units. Uh, I I want to say between two thousand six and two thousand ten, and then after two thousand ten, it dropped off from four deed restricted units to zero. Out of nowhere.
Everybody know what they were?
Yeah.
Anybody in the commission?
That would have been Inch Cliff, Ledgerd Lane, and I gotta, I'd have to go look and see what the other two were.
The other two, weren't the other two the Habitat Humanity Houses and the?
Uh, yes, over by uh.
Flintlock.
Yeah, Flintlock Drive.
So Inch Cliff and Ledger Lane are part of those four, but then they, but then they're back now, is.
Well, I don't know why they would have disappeared and I don't know why the ones for Habitat that are on Flintlock would have disappeared. Thanks, Kevin.
So there are two on Flintlock?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go look them up then.
And it would have been done for Habitat, so.
Okay.
I forgot about those, yeah.
So you'll have eight, so that'll bump up your percentage.
Yeah, all the way.
Difference.
Like one and a half or two, yeah.
So I'm gonna write, I'll I'll, there's a form that comes out every year, so I don't know who got it here, what happened to it, but.
I don't.
I'll just, I'll directly contact her and and get those added to your tally, she, because you should get credit for all of these.
How many dwelling units do we have total?
Sixty-five hundred, give or take.
And so we have a whopping eight that are deed restricted.
Right up there, we're, we're two or three percent, so we're, there's, there's a couple hundred that fall under CFHA.
Okay.
That's our biggest number.
That counts.
But.
Every town's biggest number, so the fact that you have eight deed restricted units is actually phenomenal.
Yeah.
No, I'm not lying. We, North Stonington was number one with six. For small, like, nobody has that. Everybody has, I mean, the the big, the cities do, obviously, but I'm talking rural towns with no infrastructures. You don't see it as often.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't pat yourselves on the back. That, that's a, an accomplishment, believe it or not, oddly. All right, there you go, Mike.
Probably out of the site visits, the big thing is is driving through commercial areas and looking at uh sign compliance and getting letters out. Uh, to to get our commercial signs back under control. Uh, gas stations are. Uh, favorite targets, uh, they love to put signs on all their bollards, that's not allowed. Uh, so they, they kind of half-ass comply and we'll go get the rest of it. Um, enforcement still chickens.
We were chicken.
You know, and and most of the complaints come in saying somebody's free-ranging their chickens. Okay, uh, sounds like, give me a hint, you know, where do I look? But, you know, and and the letters go out and. It's amazing, normally within a week, people are in going, I didn't know I needed a permit. Well, how could you not know? But, okay. And they, they apply that day and and they want to comply, they just, for some reason, didn't know they needed it. Some, some of our old favorites are back. Uh, fourteen ninety-six Route Twelve, the guy on the corner. Um, working with him, it's under new management. I gave him a copy of his site plan and said, here's what it's supposed to look like. He's working towards forty blacksmith, which Eric will remember probably from a decade ago, they're back. And I don't know that they're any better than they were the first time we cited him, but we'll get back on them. Three thirty-four Colonel Leonard Highway is uh the one next to the Foner's Preserve entrance that had the three-foot grass. Across from Mayor's Inn. We got the grass cut, the mayor turned public works loose again, even though the, the owner promised he was getting a landscaper. Nah, he didn't. So when they cut the grass, I actually went and looked at the structure. And uh, there are some major structural questions. Uh, I've got to get out with the building official and the fire marshal. The building itself is blighted, there's holes in the roof, the the bulkhead for the uh basement is collapsed and gone. The basement doors open. I did not go in and look, I don't know what's in there. I don't want to know what's in there. Uh, but it's a, it's, it's adjacent to a large parcel of open space. That could be where the Black Bears are wintering over, I don't know. But we'll, we've got to get after that.
I know Barry Drive isn't on here.
Uh, I, yeah, I don't know why I didn't put on Barry Drive. Uh, we've actually gone to the lawyer. Uh, he had put in a permit to put in a carport. Uh, and it put in Sonotube Foundation to support a carport. Um, he couldn't get his permits because he was delinquent on taxes. And uh, it just went downhill from there. Somehow he managed to build a two-story attached garage with no permits.
On Sonotubes.
On Sonotubes, we believe, no inspections, no permits, no contractor as near as we can tell. We think he did the work himself. Uh, so we, we called attorney on that one and said, hey, we, we need some help, uh, you know, uh. Our building official was on the phone call with me and, and of course, with uh state building code, we're gonna ask him to tear it down. Figuring that'll get his attention, because nothing else did. Uh, and then go from there, you know, it's, it's, he's at least gonna have to have the walls and foundation open for inspection. Uh, probably needs an engineer to tell us. What, from our, from our view on what we have, we don't think there's a foundation under it. We think there's Sonotubes that would have supported a carport. Uh, we'll go from there. And then uh, I've been going back over the last two years, looking at items where letters went out. No action was taken, no, there's no record of any action being taken. I started with Blight, because. At least I can drive by and look and see if they're still blighted. Uh, I'm going through zoning violations where we issued a a notice of violation. Request for voluntary compliance. Did anything ever happen? It may have, it's just finding those records and part of it may be the difficulty in getting through. Our non-hierarchical M-drive and and trying to find things. Julie's done a tremendous job of just, just one rule, everything goes in the address file, everything goes in the street file. If it has an address, put it in the street file. And and then uh, I started doing that and then I realized I wasn't putting it in the subject file. So I've been uh reeducated and hopefully our, our system will get better. I wasn't much help to Julie. She says, how did we do this? Uh, the commission acted on it and staff took care of it, which was not much help. Uh, really from the commission viewpoint, it was not, we gave it a staff, they, they took care of it or not. Permit applications, there's quite a few, but you'll notice there's not as many, um, single-family homes as there were last time. Uh, there's still quite a few, but you know, when you look, there aren't as many empty building lots for single-family homes. They're, they're being built out pretty quick. Worked with the town council admin committee. Uh, they've got the, the sunsetting of the short-term rental ordinance coming up. So I, I pointed them towards, uh, seven one forty-eight and state statute, which governs what they can do. Uh, and I think they have a draft going out to their members this week. Uh, their first meeting is after the new council is seated. Uh, council gets seated the sixth. I think admin's first meeting is like the eighth. But they'll have a, a straw man draft that, uh, their chair is, uh, endorsed with, uh, Roxanne. So they'll have something to look at. Other than that, uh, I, I agree with Juliet, uh, that, that you can't do this job in fifteen hours a week. I'm trying to stay under twenty, uh, but there've been weeks I've been in four days for six and seven hours a day and still not getting it done and Juliet's having to do a lot of it, which detracts from the jobs that I think we want the, the director of land use to be doing, pursuing grants, pursuing economic development, providing guidance and kicking people in the butt to go get stuff done. Uh, when she's got to be a worker bee, it just doesn't help. And part of our problem, I think, is every municipality in Connecticut's looking for land use people. And a lot of them are larger, so you can hire somebody right out of school and mentor them properly and, and guide them along. We're a one of in a lot of cases. And, uh, we don't pay what some of the other towns are paying. Uh, so we've had some good people come in as assistants. And then they moved on to other places because we couldn't pay them what they were now worth now that we got them qualified and certified. You know, it's, it's difficult. Uh, it gets more difficult next year. Uh, because I'm coming up where I've, I've got to take distributions from 401Ks. And Mary starts hers next year and, and I'm not going to put myself in a position where I pay more for Medicare because I had to take retirement distributions. Uh, and if something's got to go, it'll be getting paid by Ledgerd to help. Like, I can volunteer, but I can't, I can't afford to get paid.
Well, and the town can't be in that position where, you know, we have a volunteer doing zoning.
Yeah, well, you can't. It's, it's got to be a paid position. You have to be appointed because, you know, it's, it's, if somebody wants to, uh,
And qualified for the statute now.
Well, yeah, and, and, you know, I'm going to run up against that pretty quick. Uh, and I don't know if Casio's even running any classes now. Uh, it may be the same as, as the wetlands classes.
No, they are.
Yeah, so, you know, little at a time.
Um, I just realized something, Mr. Woody, uh, we did get to, well, we got a new application submitted for a, a potential reg amendment change, uh, submitted by Mr. Treister. And then the, um, moratorium is actually a reg amendment change. That's what it is. So I filled out an application form for that too, so, um, they would just be accepted tonight and we would set the public hearing for next month, if that's okay with you, or did you want to wait till January? I do want to do.
Oh, no, yeah, we, we will, um, certainly, uh, accept that and we'll schedule the public hearing for December.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right, I just forgot to mention it in the beginning.
No, I, I, I forgot to, so thank you. Anything else? Tony, anything from WPCA?
Hmm, no.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, without objection, uh, we will adjourn, uh, this meeting of the Ledgerd Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, Nancy, you can stop the recording.
Nate, Nate. I, 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 I personally really appreciate your contributions to the town for the past several years. I think you've done a great job, so.